Good evening and welcome to the February 10th Goffstown Select Board Meeting. First thing, would everybody join me for a Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
First up would be the acceptance and corrections of minutes from 127, 2020, public and non-public, and 24, 2020, public. Motion?
I make a motion that we accept the minutes from 127, 2020, public and non-public, and 224, 2020, public minutes with corrections if need be.
I think you mean to say 24, not 224.
Yeah, 24, 2020.
24, 2020, so we're looking at 127, 2020, public and non-public, and 24, 2020, public minutes.
One second.
Motion by Mark, second, and by Kelly. Any discussion changes?
No.
All in favor? I oppose, abstaining, seeing none.
I abstain from the 127.
127?
Yeah.
I'd like to remind that the polls of primary open tomorrow at 7:00 a.m. and close at 7:00 p.m. For those of you who don't know, the Panavio site is at Bartlett, and here, this side of town is at Goffstown. If you're not sure where you vote, you can go online on through the Goffstown website, and it'll tell you where you can... what street you live on will tell you which way to vote. Derek, you want to start for a couple of minutes there?
Sure. On tab 6A, you have your committee meeting scheduled for the next two weeks. Again, presidential primary, polls open tomorrow at 7:00 a.m. On Wednesday at 6:30 p.m. at the library, the library trustees.
I'll be there.
Okay? And Thursday at 7:00 p.m., the planning board here in this room.
I'll be here.
Next week, a reminder, on Monday, both Town Hall and the Goffstown Public Library will be closed in observance of President's Day. On Tuesday at 6:00 p.m., the sewer commission is here in this room.
I'll be here.
Wednesday, 7:00 p.m., Parks and Rec Center, the Parks and Rec Commission.
I'll be there.
And then on Thursday at 7:00 p.m., the ad hoc Glen Lake Waterfront Committee will be in this room.
I'll be there. And I think this is supposed to read February 13th, isn't it? Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Wow. And February 7, 24, 2020, needs to be addressed as well. Okay. Then the following week, our meeting is the 24th, is that correct?
Yes, it is. Yep.
Okay. I will not be here for that meeting.
Okay.
And I'll need somebody to cover the 27th's planning board meeting.
Got it. Was it February 27?
Yeah. And you can discuss it that Monday night, but just let somebody know that I will not be here for that week. I'll be gone. Go ahead, Derek.
On the next page, you have your consent agenda. You have employee status report for a police officer resignation. You also have an event permit for the gardens at Unconunnic Mountain. This is various dates from mid-April through the end of October at 452 Mountain Road.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstaining, seeing none, motion passes.
On the next page, you have your assessors' recommendations. The town assessor recommends two abatements. These are for tax year 2018 and 2019. MAP 29, Lot 17, that's again for tax year 2018 and 2019. And then MAP 6, Lot 22-79, and that's for year 2019 only.
Make a motion to approve the assessor's recommendations as presented.
Second.
Motion by Kelly, second, by Mark. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstaining, seeing none, motion passes.
At tab 6D, you have the annual certificate report for equitable sharing agreement and certification between the Goffstown Police Department and the Department of Justice and the Department of Treasury. This is for federal asset forfeiture that the police department collects and holds onto, and this is an annual renewal, or I guess an annual certification.
You need a motion?
Yes, a motion.
Motion for the chairman to sign?
Yes.
Motion to approve the annual equitable sharing agreement between the Goffstown Police Department and Department of Justice, with the chairman signing the agreement.
Second.
Any discussion? And the amount of that is $6,554.96, is that correct?
That's the current balance, yes. Yep.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Oppose, abstaining, seeing none, motion carries.
At tab 6E, you have a memo from the finance director. The auditor did provide... we presented back in December, the final auditor's report. Shortly thereafter, they indicated that they did have some management items that were coming in a separate letter. We have a copy of that letter, and that's incorporated, the finance director's responses to that. And if you had any questions, you could answer that. And then at the next page, it's a request to engage the auditor for the calendar years 2019 through 2021. Again, GFOA recommendations are to go with multi-year terms with auditors to get more favorable pricing. Also gives us an opportunity to know who will be doing the audit, so whenever we have questions on proper procedures for the accountant, we can call them up and ask them those questions.
Can I need a motion to the town administrator to sign a three-year agreement?
I'll motion to authorize the town administrator to sign the three-year engagement letter of Melanson Heath for auditing services for the years ending 2019, 2020, and 2021 as presented.
Motion by Chuck, submitted by Collins. Any discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstaining, motion passes.
That's all I had for the town administrator's report. I know it's a little early for a public comment, but I believe Ellen's here for a presentation, so I didn't know if you wanted to...
Was it under public comment? Or is that...
It's not on the agenda. I told her to come in right around public comment, you might be able to take her a little bit early.
Go ahead, Ellen.
Thank you. I'll be here. Goffstown, I've lost my throat.
This is Ellen Vermarkowitz.
Ellen Vermarkowitz, thank you. I'm here from the Goffstown Main Street Program, who thanked the select board for participating in the pumpkin regatta last year. And with Jet's excellent navigation skills, the select board's vote came in first. So, you guys...
Thank you, Jet.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you, Ellen. We'll be back.
Good, good.
Is there anybody here for public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on. Public Works Director?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Trophy. All right. At least put it there for one whole meeting, right? Couple items tonight. First, 4A, I think you've got a tab in your packet with my memo. This is just requesting our seasonal shift to construction season hours at TPW, going from a five, eight-hour day work week to a four, 10-hour day model. This allows us to mobilize fewer times throughout the week, both in the morning and then in the afternoon, and that adds up over the course of the summer for a good amount of extra productivity for our roadwork. It also allows us to, if we really need to shift and work on an off day, if a contractor just... a subcontractor, I should say, just happens to only be available on that day, we can usually flex and at least have one or two people there to support that, maybe for traffic or supervision if needed. But it's worked out really well. I think we've been doing it for probably close to 20 years at this point. So if there's any questions, I'll take them, but otherwise, that'd be the request, would be to authorize the memo. I have a draft memo that we have all the employees sign because it does affect their little few of their contract items, such as holiday pays and their lunch that they would be waiving to work those 10-hour days. So we have them sign that, and that goes in a copy of each of their personnel files for the summer.
Can you pull that mic a little closer?
Sure. It's all right.
Thank you. Any questions on that, anybody?
No, it's worked well over the years.
So do you need a motion?
Yeah. I'll make a motion to approve the DPW summer construction season schedule as proposed.
Second.
Motion by Collins, second by Kelly. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstaining, motion passes.
Thank you. Second item, it was kind of a last minute from the recycling service, Casella, on Friday, so I think you may have just a placeholder memo from Derek. Thanks, Derek, for getting that in there. What this is, is a proposed extension to our recycling services agreement with a single-stream recycler. Right now, we are using Casella for both of our solid waste disposal as well as our single-stream recycling. Our single stream is taken to Charlestown, the Charlestown facility, and we self-haul both for the trash and recycling to Mass. The solid waste goes up north to Bethlehem. They are... that contract didn't leave me a ton of time coming in to get this set up, but rather than try to get something out to bid, they asked if they could submit a proposal for an extension. Let you folks take a look at it. If you're not satisfied, then we could go out to bid. The landscape for recycling disposal is sort of narrowing along with the recycling market. I just got word, I spoke to NRRA in response to this proposal from Casella. NRRA is the Northeast Resources Recovery Association. They're sort of a... it's almost like the NHMA but for solid waste and recycling in New Hampshire. And they sort of manage a lot of the lesser substance disposal contracts, so they, you know, may have some hazardous waste contracts or construction demo, that tires, that sort of thing, glass. But they also are a service for towns and cities to bounce ideas off, but also they kind of keep... try to keep track of the recycling and solid waste markets in New England. So I called them, and they said that right now, they're looking at towns that are paying up to $158 a ton to have their single stream removed. That includes the transportation piece, but some communities that were on a longer-term contract, a fixed price of $55, she said they've got a couple that are coming up for renewal at $155 a ton removed. So pretty significant changes, and I'm sure Megan briefed you over the last couple of years about... I know she did a couple of years ago, and I'm sure over this past year, about kind of the way things are going. No change in the global market. China is still rejecting anything less than .5% contamination levels, which nobody really can meet. The word on the street is that Indonesia has taken on the majority of the mixed paper, which is for a single stream, that's a good majority of what we send off in our single-stream product. They may be looking at some of the similar restrictions that China had to sort of narrow down their stream as well, just because there isn't that commodity price out on the market right now for this good, this material. But we're not quite in the phase yet where the plant stateside have been able to get approved and get constructed. So we are looking at probably about a two-year window, according to NRRA, for bad pricing as far as the single-stream market goes. With that in mind, the Casella... our current Casella rate is at a $60 per ton threshold, which means that if the... if nothing else happens, if the average commodity price is zero, so let's say that out on the... they can find somebody to take it for them, and they don't have to pay them any money, and they don't have to get paid back any money, then we'd be paying $60 a ton. Right now, it's at about a negative $20, so they're... so even Casella, when they're finding a landing spot for the single-stream material that they sort at their facility, they're getting an average of having to pay $20 for every ton of material that goes out their door. So you take that $20 that Casella's paying, plus our $60 threshold, and right now, we're paying just over $80 at the door when we bring our trucks to Casella. We're paying $80 for every ton that we drop off of recycling. Their proposal is to increase our threshold rate to $80, which at the current market rate, which would bring our per-ton cost at Casella to $100 a ton, plus whatever it costs us to ship. For our own internal cost to truck, it's about $19, $18, $19 all-in, so that's the gas, the labor...
Per ton.
Per ton, replacement of the trucks, all that. So our all-in cost is about $120, $125 a ton if we were to renew with this current agreement. So we're in the wheelhouse. We're still $25 to $30 a ton less than some of the higher-paying communities that are just renewing contracts now to have somebody come and pick it up at their door, which makes sense, you know, you're paying that 20% to 30% profit and overhead for somebody. So I don't think it's unreasonable. They're proposing a four-year extension term. I talked to them about their request. They've got a CPI-based annual increase to that threshold amount, so it would be either the CPI number for trash and refuse disposal, I think it's called, garbage and trash collection CPI index, so it's just for that market, or 3%, whichever is higher. So there'd be a floor, I suppose. We're never going to get better than that 3%. Anyway, a long way saying that for a four-year agreement, we'd be starting off for our level of contamination that we've historically had in Goffstown at a new $80 threshold, so we'd be paying, starting in April anyway, $100 a ton to dispose of recycling, and that's if the market stays consistent.
What's that trash cost per ton?
So right now, we are on a, I think it's a 3% or 3.5% a year increase, I think currently. I'd have to look it up. It's about $55, I think, in that neck of the woods, maybe a little higher. And that's just for the tipping fee itself, not the transportation. Costs a little bit more to transport our trash per ton. Both the weight is different of how it fills the trucks, but also we're driving uphill to Bethlehem with a full load versus downhill with a full load to Charlestown, Mass., which, believe it or not, makes a difference on the fuel economy and all that, and a little bit of a longer haul, of course, too. That... we'll have more discussion there. We've got a few years left on that contract, but they are rapidly running out of space at the Casella facility in Bethlehem. They apparently were trying to expand. I think they had 100 acres requested, or I believe it was 100-acre request to expand their permit for the landfill, and I believe Bonnie, NRRA, said they were approved for a five-acre expansion so far only.
It's all wet up there.
Which I think we are...
Oh, yeah.
From their projections, as part of their packet, we submitted some comments to them for their expansion, and as part of their packet of information that DES put together, I'm pretty sure that our current contract is going to outlast the usable space if they keep receiving material at the current rate. And it's actually accelerated right now that more communities are deciding to try to condense and just throw away more. If they get rid of curbside recycling, it becomes pretty hard to audit what's ending up in the trash, so naturally, all the trash volume is increasing as well. So they're probably going to run out of space before our contract runs out, so at some point, we'll have them in for a discussion of what to do and where it's going to go and at what negotiation...
Is there options? Do they have options?
I mean, there are options, they just become awful far away. Turnkey would be the first, and they're not too far behind. They're Phase 3, I think, now. They're running out of room as well. So it's sort of a narrowing window of disposal options. Some communities for recycling now are driving to Maine, to Portland, Maine, to get rid of it, but I don't know where the next step comes for operating landfill, anyway. So it's kind of...
About incinerators? I know there's one up in Concord or...
I would fully expect that we'll start to see more discussion of permitting for those, but that's a pretty long process to get a new one up and running, and I think, at least up until the last few years, been cost prohibitive based on the, you know, the scrubbers that are needed for the... to meet the, you know, the Clean Air Act requirements. The current facility there, the incinerator facility, is they're at, I think, their capacity. They're not accepting new loads, so not much good news on the solid waste landscape these days.
Are you still sending people out to look at barrels at all? Or is that done, that was just interns up?
We usually try to do that with the interns in the summer. If we get a particularly bad load or two on a certain day, we might do something during, you know, during the rest of the year if we can. We've got the new position that was approved at the previous meeting that we may be able to spend some time trying to narrow down that, where we might still have problem areas. One of the first, I think, things that we ought to start looking at might be some sort of either centralized or some... maybe a coordinated network of composting. If we can get the food waste number down, that will pretty drastically reduce our solid waste tonnage, you know, if we can keep that stuff in Goffstown, or maybe find a network that we can sort of facilitate to have people maybe compost on their own if they don't have a place to use it, at least put their name on a list, so if somebody does want compost, they could drive around, pick it up. But that's, I guess, probably for another night, I suppose.
It used to be... we used to have a little composting right behind the shed, the shack there.
It's tough now with, you know, with the full curbside. It's, you know, it's kind of like cardboard, you know? We'll get those that might come in with a big load of cardboard or something, but to make an extra trip just for compost is going to take some habit-changing, for sure, so...
Okay.
So anyway, tonight, for the recycling agreement, the request would be if you feel, you know, I'm... when we previously looked at this, between the two big ones, so the two that are left are Casella and Waste Management. E.L. Harvey is in Massachusetts there, they would be the third, but Bonnie, NRRA, said they have now reached the point where they no longer need New Hampshire solid recycling either, so they've got enough from Massachusetts communities. So we're down to two, unless we count EcoMaine and Portland, and I think that's probably right now, anyway. It's too far to truck until we are forced to. The last time we looked at Casella versus Waste Management, we ran the numbers, and Waste Management's pricing structure made less sense, the more expensive the... or the less revenue we received for the recycling. So as that recycling market dipped, Casella's model was more beneficial to us. That's why we chose them initially, because of the way it was trending back in '16. I could certainly, if you want to put it out to bid, we certainly can get both groups to the table again. I'm not sure we'll do much better than what Casella's proposed, anyway, for an extension now, so I thought I'd bring it to the group before we spend any work putting together a bid package, if you want to go that way.
That's what I know, right?
Yeah? Lock it in?
Tough one.
Nice question.
Go ahead.
How does this... I mean, it's no bearing on if we approve it or not, but what does this do, impact our budget projections?
So recycling varies a little bit year to year. We're in the 2,000, 200, 200 tons a year, I think has been our average for the last couple of years. So at $20 a ton, it's about a $40,000 hit, if the commodity pricing stays exactly where it is now for that 12 months.
And that's effective April?
That'd be April 1st, yeah.
Now, do we budget for it?
So I'd have to... I didn't bring my massive binder, because deliberative session, you know, put it on the shelf for a couple of weeks, anyway. The... I think when we budgeted, we increased the tonnage a little bit, but...
That's more than 3%.
Yeah. Yeah, it wasn't... we didn't increase by a $20 margin, for sure, on the ACR, so it'll be one...
I guess I'd like to... I guess we can approve it, but I'd still like you to come back with some plans on where the money comes from.
Yep. Right.
Because, and, you know, March will know what's going to happen, it could be even worse, so...
I agree. I have a question, too.
Go right ahead, Jet.
So there's a 3% escalation rate at best. Did they give you any sense at all, based on the market? Is there a point where they would say, "We're not going to go above this," or will any other company do that?
So, no, because it's too... the problem with this is they'll... they will hold us with the threshold, which is... so that 3% is on the threshold amount, which is, no matter what, good market, bad market, that's what their cost to process is, basically. But then, the other piece of the equation is that commodity rate, which globally, you know, does this. So we could fix this all day and still have no idea what, you know, we swung from, you know, I think in the good times, it was $80 to $90 a ton revenue, which we then split 50/50 with them, which would be the same agreement here. If we get back into a positive, we split the proceeds to where we are now, which is probably the bottom, what we've had so far, anyway, at $20 cost per ton instead of a, you know, 70 to 80 revenue. So, you know, that little 3% hold on the threshold, yes, it's... I guess it's minimum on that piece, but the real driver is the global market, which changes pretty quick.
Sure. Thank you.
I think it was this time last year when Megan was coming in and saying it was going up, 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 so...
You know, the... brings up all the same discussions about what do you do? Do you, you know, do you get rid of curbside recycling, as some communities have, but it really doesn't much solve the, you know, the problem. The cost, they've told us, to landfill material that has recycling in it is different because it compacts differently, so you're getting less material per yard now of landfill cover that's needed, and now you're getting folks out of the habit.
Oh, no.
Once you do it, it's hard to get it back, and...
So you need a motion?
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Go ahead, sir.
Just curious, Adam, from my own education, I'm looking at Schedule B, which are the acceptable items and non-acceptable items?
Okay.
And I'm just curious, why are glass bottles and jars acceptable, yet window glass and baking glass are not acceptable? Is there something in...
Good question. It's a great question.
Because I thought we crushed all our glass and reused it in asphalt next.
So previous... before, I guess it was two contracts ago, we had... we were accepting glass from other communities, and then NRRA hosts the glass program, so they'll process it, grind it, and then use it in road projects. We had moved away from that because it's... for us, it's not really a winner because it's... you're asking now the customers who have curbside recycling and collection to come bring us their glass, which just wasn't really happening. So really, all it was, was we were hosting NRRA's crusher and conveyors, and then other communities were bringing their glass to us. Once the pit base level was sort of where it was, we didn't want to be putting glass, you know, close to the playing field surface and be used as fill that might work its way up, which is what would happen on the road projects, where we'd use it for, you know, ditch, you know, general fill. So we had asked NRRA to stop. I shouldn't say way, that happened before I got here, but right before I got here, NRRA was turned off, so we wouldn't just keep continuing to create piles of glass that we didn't have any way to get rid of. I do not know how much NRRA, at their current hosting site, how much goes into asphalt or not. For us, here, every glass, if it's not in the curbside, it's in the solid waste, so we don't have a separate glass, you know, sorting pile here on site.
So in the same vein, why are magazines and mixed office paper acceptable, yet napkins, tissues, paper towels, and register tape are not acceptable? I mean, this seems really confusing.
So the... I can't speak to...
I mean, are we supposed to go through our recyclables and take out all the register tape?
Yeah, I can't speak to register tape, why that one in particular.
There's something in the ink, maybe, or I don't...
Certainly, the napkins, tissues, and paper towels, the real concern is the food, the oils and grease that get on it. In the end, they're hard to keep as a, you know, a piece. It turns into minuscule products at the site that jam up the conveyor belts and all that, and they don't... they don't... turns into contamination, basically, which they then have to dispose of at 150 bucks a ton or whatever on there, because it's so small, they can't tell where it came from. But I'm not sure about register tape. Might be the same theory, it's small pieces of paper, kind of...
I'm just curious, you know, it falls in that category of things that make you go, hmm.
Well, register tape has a coating on it, too. I mean, it's kind of...
Well, I know, but think of all the stuff that's on magazines. My gosh, there's so much ink and everything else in magazines, I mean, you'd think.
A lot of it, that I've seen, like the plastic, I think the last bullet there on the not acceptable recyclable is less than two inches in any size. I think that goes right along with that same idea, like the shopping bags, too. It really clogs up the machinery at the sorting facility. So that would be my guess about the register tape, probably.
Okay. Thanks, I appreciate it.
Okay, we need a motion?
I make a motion that we allow interns agreement with the Casella recycling for a four-year extension.
I would second that.
Any other questions? Discussion? None? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion passes.
Thank you. If I could, just give you a real quick update on the Henry Bridge Road project, since we did get kind of a closure point. They, as of last week, the contractors placed concrete in both the south and the north abutments now. If they didn't get there today to get all the forms off, I didn't check before I came over, that'll be happening this week, and then they'll demobilize for the rest of the winter. So, got some good progress, actually, a little bit more than I even thought they were going to get done. So, hopefully, sometime between now and when we have our pre-con, our real pre-con meeting with them for the summer construction season, we'll get an updated schedule, and hopefully that will show a nice, tighter window for the full closure that's going to have to happen this summer. I know there's been a little request for some publicity surrounding that date of when that's going to happen and how it'll affect the folks that are trying to get across the river for summer camps and stuff in the morning, so we could go about that a couple of ways. We could put out some general information, just that there will be a closure of some length this summer, starting in June after school lets out, or we could wait until we get the actual dates of, it's really your preference of how you'd like to start putting out that information.
Quicker we can get it out there, in my opinion, the better.
Yeah, but I mean, no sense putting anything out without any dates or anything.
Well, I agree.
So, once the dates are established, I think you could probably, you can put it in the center, in the roundabout, in the signs, and.
Yeah, sure.
Things like that are at the other, also at the other end, so.
On the website, homepage of.
Yeah, so I would wait until we get to that point.
We'll try, we'll let them get their demo complete here this week, and then we'll start poking them for that updated schedule.
So, that arrangement worked out pretty good, huh?
It did. Weather cooperated, certainly, but, yes, everything's.
All right, we have a public hearing scheduled at 6:30. Are you all set, or do you have?
It's all ahead for public. Thank you.
Thank you.
And N R A 41, call 14-B, traffic ordinances. We have a public hearing scheduled. This is the second public hearing for three traffic ordinances scheduled for 2:10 at 6:30 P M. The first public hearing was conducted on 1/27/2020 at 6:30 P M. with no public input. I'll hereby open the hearings. Is there anybody here for public comment? Seeing none, we'll close it. Did you want me to read all this, or?
Maybe just the second bullet, where it says the stop sign on Second Ave. and what the ordinance is proposing.
Okay. Stop sign on Second Ave. at the intersection of Summer Street ordinance, in compliance with R S A 41, call 14-B. The Goffstown Select Board announced how we did the public hearings. The copies of the proposed ordinance are available online at www.gofftown.com, and in the town clerk's office, we have copies available here at the meeting tonight. The effect of this proposed ordinance will be to install a installation of a stop sign on Second Ave. at the intersection of Summer Street. Second one is stop sign on Bell Road at the intersection of Bog Road. Again, this is the stop sign on Bell Road at the intersection of Bog Road ordinance. Copies of the proposed ordinance are available online, Bog Road ordinance, copies of the proposed ordinance are available online at www.gofftown.com, town clerk's office, and we have copies here available tonight. The effect of this proposed ordinance will be the installation of a stop sign on Bell Road at the intersection of Bog. The third is in compliance with R S A 41, call 14-B, is to accept input on proposed ordinance titled John King Drive Speed Limit Ordinance. Copies of the ordinance are available online at www.gofftown.com, in the town clerk's office, and we have copies available here tonight. The effect of this proposed ordinance will be to set the speed limit on John King Drive to 25 miles per hour. Again, is there anybody here to speak to this? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
And you'll be voting on those at the meeting on the 24th?
That'll be the final, it won't be a hearing, that'll just be a vote.
Yes.
Okay, we've covered all that. We'll go to old business. Seven. We got anything from Wallace Road thing yet? No?
No, they asked for some updated CAD drawings. They're working on the final construction estimates to give us back to review, so not since we met with them on the 24th.
Okay, and then we have the personnel plan?
I'll be sending out the info tech policies and the draft inclement weather policy this week. You'll get those by email, and I'll give you timelines on when we can start getting comments back from you, and then we'll keep moving, checking those off every couple of weeks.
Well, Mike, you guys all set with that? Are you still meeting there?
Yeah, we got a meeting coming up 20th, I think.
Yes, I've got the final edits to make to that, so I'll be making that this week and providing it back to the committee, and it looks like they'll be making their final recommendation on their meeting on the 20th, and most likely be before the Select Board on the 24th to present their report.
Great, thank you.
We have a truck at McDivitt on open recall for a mirror, and then headed to Freightliner New Hampshire for engine codes, truck installing, D P W., and hydraulic wheel motor replacement in-house, expected back this week. What's the story with the Freightliner dump truck? Engine codes installed in this? No?
Zeb didn't have any other news, just that it was having trouble installing, so they were bringing it down to Freightliner. He did not have an expected timeline on when they'd have it back, because they had to go through all the codes, so.
And there was a truck at Liberty that we're having a hard time getting fixed. Is that all set now? Have we gotten the bill on that?
I'll pick that second one, no.
No, huh? Okay.
Maybe this week with A P.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Derek, I know we have the AmeriCorps position posted. Have you guys started receiving applicants yet for that?
No, we haven't received applicants. Right now, it's just posted on Catholic Charities in New Hampshire. We'll post it on our website as well to try and generate a few more, but we haven't seen any applications in yet.
And those applications appointed are pointing to what? What are you requesting?
This is for the Vista AmeriCorps, which will be kind of like a work with Parks and Rec, Town Hall, and the library on a seniors coordinator to see what we have for available programming, where they might be able to expand some programming, and also what networks exist outside right now to kind of form a better network to support senior citizens in Goffstown.
And have we drawn up a job description?
Yes, yep, and that was approved by Americorps, so, yes.
Could you get the board?
Right now, it's for one year, right?
It's for, it's a 12-month period, yes.
And then what?
And then we could apply again, and normally, every year, the project shifts a little bit, depending on what the person did before. But, yes, I'll get you all the job description on what it is, and so you can see what was approved.
We may need, know somebody that we can recommend to apply to it if we, you know, the job is about. Anything else?
Two last things, I guess, I had for you. At the meeting, immediately after deliberative session, there were some questions, because one of the warrant article language changed. Danielle did reach out to the Department of Revenue Administration, provided them with the revised language to see what effect that would have on the optional veterans credit for total connected service disability. Whether it passes or fails, it would not affect what we currently have for that optional, which is $2,000. Again, that had the Select Board recommendation on it. I didn't know if you wanted to leave it on there, remove it. Again, you do have the option on that, but again, whether this pass or fails, it makes no change to what we currently offer for that optional tax credit.
Wasn't there another $500 that was involved in that?
There is a, there is the all veterans credit that, I think there was a little bit of confusion, that deliberative, if you qualify for that service-connected disability, you're also going to get the all credit, which is $500. So, it doesn't affect either of those credits.
And then there was some discussion about total and permanent disability.
Correct, correct. D R A said for future, if we want to do it, we should use their suggested language, which is to modify, and that the total and permanent is actually written into the statute, and they traditionally do not advise that you pull the words right out of the statute, that you instead use their suggested language that points to the title of statute, so.
So, when all is said and done, what does the tax impact?
Zero. It will not, it will not impact, because, again, it was amended both in the language, but it was also amended to $2,000, which is the optional credit we currently.
So, we're staying at $2,000?
We're staying at $2,000.
Okay, thank you.
So, there is no net change. You'll see that in the Voters' Guide, that you had printed copies, and then they were also emailed out under Article 13. The only other item on the Voters' Guide that I will bring to your attention, there is a, some suggested language that was provided by the lead petitioner, and then in your Voters' Guide is the language that I would propose, that you use, to kind of keep it, I guess, as factual base, and people can do the research on their own, and look at the deliberative session minutes once we get those up. I felt like the language that was provided by the lead petitioner, as evidenced by some of the debate that went on during the deliberative session, kind of was from one point of view.
Any discussion on that? Go ahead.
The only suggestion I had, I emailed you guys about it, but it was late, was that on those two petition warrant articles, can we put something? I know on 14, we decided not to put a recommendation. Could we just put something that says that we acknowledge the fact that we're not recommending? Because right now, everything else has the recommended with the numbers, and those have nothing. I just don't want people to think we forgot it.
And the printed version that was not sent out, but does have on Article 14, a recommendation on this article is not required, and the Select Board decided not to recommend or not recommend this petition article.
Got it.
So, I did add that to Article 14. Again, if you wanted to vote tonight to remove your recommendation on Article 13, I would include that bullet language on there as well.
That might be a good idea. So, if that article fails, what happens?
Nothing. If it passes, nothing. And because it was amended to the same amount that we're currently, and because there was some language that was put in that D R A was not in favor of, they basically said, whether it passes or fails, it does not change that optional tax credit.
Well, I don't think it hurts to leave it on there. Recommendation, do you?
The only thing I worry about of having a recommendation is that I don't want people to think that it does have a tax impact, like we're recommending something that's effectively not going to change anything. I think that's the only downside of putting it on there.
Well, if you don't, what happens if you don't have anything on it?
Doesn't matter, right?
Well.
Doesn't matter if it passes or fails, it stays the same.
Same thing if you leave the recommendation on there.
Sure. It's the only downside I could think of of keeping it on.
I just think, I just think, a lot of cases, if it has a recommendation, you know, it'll get a yes vote. I think that's just a better thing than having a no vote and confusing people. That's just, I don't think.
I think it's fine, as it is.
Either that, or we could take it off and put in the explanation that this will have no tax impact.
Yeah, I think I did put language in there that the, that we've been advised by the Department of Revenue Administration, that this would not make any change to the current optional tax credit, and that would, that would stay at $2,000 for those that qualified under the R S A.
I'd rather have that.
Yeah, we need to make it clear.
That's in there, yeah.
That's what I mean, just that.
Yeah, so take out the recommendation or leave it in there.
I mean, it says that it doesn't matter. If you guys want it, that's fine, I just don't.
The recommendation is what will show up on the ballot. Again, I mean, that's really the only difference, is what you wanted to say on the ballot.
I'd leave it on there. Only because it just supports the veterans tax at the ballot. If you don't have a recommendation on it, it could be construed that we don't support it.
Yeah, we recommended it the first time around, now it's being rolled back to the pre-existing, so I'd say we recommend it.
Yeah.
Consistent.
You all set with that one?
Yeah.
Kelly, you don't care? All right, so we'll leave that on there.
Okay.
We'll leave the recommendation on there.
Okay, and then I guess the only other question is, we just, a motion would be needed to approve the Voters' Guide. What will end up happening is we'll send this to the printer to print this. It gets printed on the newspaper stock, and those usually get delivered next week, and then we, Captain will sort those out, and they go out in the mail. So, people receive them about 10 to seven days before the town election.
I'd take a motion to approve at least the town section. I don't know.
The school, we were waiting on a few items from the S A U. They did provide all the language for theirs, and we've asked for a few updated graphics, but generally, yeah, we leave that portion to the school district, but for the town side, we'd ask for your approval on that.
I'll make a motion, we approve the town section of the Voters' Guide.
Seconded by Jeff. Motion by Kelly. Any discussion on it? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining?
I'm going to abstain, Peter. I've only seen this for like a couple of hours. There's no way I can digest this for a vote tonight.
All right. But we have to get it done tonight, because, you know. Anything else?
Nope.
Anybody here for public comment? Seeing none, that will conclude our public portion of tonight's meeting. We will be going into non-public. Thank you.
Time to make a motion to go into non-public session. R S A 91A, colon, 3, comma, 2, A, compensation and discipline, and C, reputation.
Second.
Motion by Mark, seconded by Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, seeing none, we'll be in non-public.